This time I'll call the Tuesday, August twenty thirty first, twenty twenty one meeting. The Jackson County Board of Supervisors Board. Mary McDessey, Mike Stannis and myself, Jack Willie. County Supervisors, Smith. Bjorn back from the auditor's office and Luann Gohy is back from her week's vacation in Utah. So it's nice to have her back at the desk. And first item on the agenda is David Dreyer. We do have one, we have several people online and one of them is one five six three. Six, six, five, two, two. Four, two, seven. Could you identify yourself, please? Jack. Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
So we haven't identified?
Yep.
Okay.
She got off.
Chair.
Yeah, so it was Teresa and she's got off the telephone, so she's live with us on Zoom.
Okay. Okay, David.
All right, we got four right away utility permits today and one field entrance permit. So we'll start with right away permits. First one is from McCoke Valley Electric, working in Farmers Creek, section seventeen. Instill a new primary underground and fiber optic line to one six zero zero three hundred and thirty third Avenue. Recommend approval of that. Second permit is from Coca Valley Electric again, section twenty one in the town of McCoke. And so a new pole underneath existing utility line located near two four six two over thirty fifth Street. Third permit is Andrew Telephone Company doing work in Jackson's sections five, seven, eight, nine, sixteen, seventeen through twenty nine, well seventeen to twenty and twenty one, twenty twenty nine. And W section thirty two installing fiber optic cable. Recommend permitted that one as well. And the last right way permit is Interstate Power and Light, South Fork, section thirty four. Instill a forty foot pole in line with existing overhead line for even residence at one five five two zero seventh street. So we recommend approval of those permits.
That was approved the right way utility permits as presented. Second, the motion is second to approve the utility permits. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carried.
And then we have a field entrance permit for Mr. Cody Coakley in South Fork Township, section three. A field entrance on the north side of eighty fifth streets and that has been reviewed and recommend approval of that permit.
I would second my motion as a second to approve the sealed entrance permit for Cody Coakley. All those in favor? I, I, motion carried.
And then the final item is signing the project plans for the bridge replacement project on four seventy fifth Avenue, Washington, three, five, six, two. Is project B R O S dash swap dash C zero four nine print eighty two dash F E dash forty nine. I dot project code. This is the replacement of the four seventy fifth bridge. It's about a forty foot, forty two foot long old bridge. And there's some photos here if you want to see it, location that as well carries about forty vehicles per day. Estimated cost is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace. So this will start the process of letting I dot let the project proceed sometime next year. And currently structured is efficient. So process to replace it, we recommend. Provo of the.
Is that those two are called what that were replacing also?
It's a little northeast of there, yes.
Okay. Same road. See embargo on that one.
I'm not sure what the women is on.
It's on the five year.
Oh, yes, yes, it is.
They could look on it there, but that's.
I can, I can get you the.
It's right there on that poster.
And here I got all the information you need in that.
No, it doesn't. It's on the same road. It's been on the five year plan, yeah. Is that about where we expected it to come in or that's our estimate?
That's our estimate. So we won't know until contractors get a hold of it.
I would approve the plan in the same for the as presented. That's the motion. Wait a second. Motion is second to approve submitting the plans and authorizing the board to sign. All those in favor?
My, my.
I, motion carried. Okay. Thank you, David. Um. As I understand Dave, sorry, I didn't know you were sprouting away. Do I understand we have started on a hundred eighty eighth, is that correct?
Yes.
For shooters out there?
Yes.
Estimate three, four weeks?
He, he says he'll get it done in the project timeline.
Okay. I don't even know what that is.
It's even November, it's slated to be complete, but they're pretty quick. Taylor's got the beam set on the bridge north of the natives there, so they're making progress, so.
Yeah, you're gonna make some happy harvesters out there.
I'd make it for her. Anything else?
Nope. Well, Lisa, do you want to take over now?
I can. So this morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the August twenty fourth, twenty twenty one board proceedings. As written by auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Motion to approve. Second, we motion in a second to approve the publication of the minutes from the previous meeting, all those in favor? I, I, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditors' office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of three hundred and forty one thousand, five hundred and fifty eight dollars and forty six cents.
Two thirds of that secondary roads.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, there was a bridge payment and there was a bunch of cracked ceilings, so it's all improvements, I guess.
Yeah, yep.
A good thing. Need to be done. Absolutely. I would make a motion to approve the claim just. Which second? I have a motion and a second to approve the claims in the amount of three hundred and forty one thousand, five hundred and fifty eight dollars and forty six cents. All those in favor? I, I, motion carried.
Just as a point of notation, we've always talked about the interim report. We will have the interim report done today, hopefully, get it sent in, so we will meet that deadline. And we also took a little bit of an effort to get the ICAP survey done. That was a little more detailed than what I envisioned, so I know Bjorn participated in that. And I know that I think we sent some out to solutions to help us fill out some of that. And I believe we'll get that also sent in today, so we've met all of our requirements for those two very in-depth forms that we needed to get sent out, so we'll make that also just for board.
And on our first session in Des Moines, that there was a lot of information coming around out up there.
Oh, my goodness.
Questions asked, you know, I mean, I, I guess they try to make it simple, but.
A lot of interesting side conversations that I participated in that nobody's your county doing, what is your county doing? If you think about Jackson County being awarded three point seven seven million, we can, three percent of that can be used for administrative expenses, which was a hundred and thirteen thousand, I think, if I figured. You know, we could hire an outside firm to do that. But I have to, I have to tell you that in visiting with the auditors around the table and around table discussion, most outside agencies don't want to take this on. So even though this money is.
The liability?
Don't want the liability.
Absolutely. I can understand that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, it is, again, we went through a lot of unknowns and like you said.
We're not done yet.
When Rob Sands said it, he says he was not certain.
And what else did we pick up from last week? Document, document, document.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And turn it in, yeah.
Well, that's fine. So I did specifically ask Jamie Cashman from ISAC. I did go up to him and I said, I just want to make sure that I understand this, Jamie. We can't use this money to build the jail, but we can use this money for, I think we had heard about some internal centers. And he goes, that's right. I said, that doesn't really make any sense. And he said, that's right. I said, okay, just so I'm clear.
There's, there's, I mean, yeah, there's so many variables, you know, air quality, distancing, things like that, that's, that's just not defined.
Yeah. Those enough. Still a lot of questions.
The only good thing that I see, there's a lot of discussion that we had yet because we have until twenty twenty four. We come up with a plan in twenty twenty six to spend it.
Yep.
Oh.
Yeah.
I heard that, I heard that several times. So we got a lot of thinking to do.
We do have a lot of thinking, yeah.
One part that I really liked was that money can be used for matching grants. So we have some good grant writers. We can use that to really.
I will give utmost credit to Shelley. Shelley has spent a lot of time.
Oh, God, yes.
And so you know what? She really has, she's gone above and beyond the call of duty. I mean, she has done her due diligence when it comes to getting these figures together. It does appear that we will be able to get some money because we did not incur a four point one percent growth. So we'll have some, I, I'm not going to say it's free money, but we will have some undesigned needed money, which is good for Jackson County. So, yeah.
Well, I think one of the things that we have to determine as a board with your assistance is, you know, everybody was talking about the teams, they're getting together to discuss the use of this money. And I think, you know, we talked about it at the department head meeting. But I think that we also need to now, you know, decide who wants to, who we want to have set on that. And if we want public input, appoint some people from the public to set in and decide how best to use that money and how we'll get the most bang for the buck.
Well, we definitely have been given a great opportunity.
Absolutely.
It's just time for us to, like you said, put our thinking caps on to come up with a plan.
Well, it's like when we get that first to people thing. I mean, that just happened in these counties, that didn't happen to Rhode Island.
Right.
What was that? One, it was almost two million dollars. More than that, I mean, we use that for a lot of projects and stuff.
Yep.
So I just think that we need to all decide who we think might be a good participant in that discussion and move forward.
I certainly think we need public input. I don't know how you do that. If you do the survey thing, I know a lot of people are doing the survey and getting input, and I think that's a good idea. To the extent, you know, I mean, there's some things you might just scratch. I mean, there's some requests that I've had already that probably would not qualify, of course.
Right.
And don't forget, it has to be COVID related. I mean, that was.
Well, I think that's. That's one of the things that the general public isn't going to know what can, what it can and can't be used for.
I don't.
And honestly, I thought the first day was great, but I still have a lot of questions running in the back of my mind.
I was just going to say that I think we were bombarded with a lot of information, a lot of things that I hadn't thought about. And yet I left there like, yep, we still want to know what we're going to use our money for. I know.
But I think it's nice, you know, I, I, I wrote a lot of notes, I've not deciphered or seen if I can even read them. But the point is to get, start making a list, you know, and making a common. We all got different ones in each.
I agree.
You know, and then.
But we don't care what you want.
First of all, it's either qualified or don't qualify, so then you're lost.
Absolutely.
So it's like.
You know what, as much as I can say, we were given this, this money, there are counties that were given a substantial amount of money.
Yes.
And I can only imagine how to allocate that money.
When you look at nineteen million dollars and Clinton counting, I think, is seventeen million dollars. It makes our three point seven seven look kind of skimpy.
But it's still appealing.
Yeah. But the, but the, how broad that money can go and how it funnels down. Was it Polk County? Is that the number one county? Was it ninety?
Ninety some.
Was it ninety five million?
I think so.
Yeah.
But it's like, I tried to think long term, you know, something that's going to affect the public long term. And you benefit from, you know, I've heard different stories out there. They were throwing some bonuses at certain people, it says, how do you justify one person than the other? You know, but they were all important. They were all frontline people, you know. I thought they made that decision a little quick.
I think the other thing that I think we need to make note is we don't really realize the value of David Farmer.
Yeah.
I thought he presented very well.
He was.
And yeah, we know what David Farmer does for us for the mental health reason. So you know why? I, I think that we need to recognize that David Farmer is an asset to this.
Well, and he, and I meant, when I talked to him, he said, if we have questions, I mean, he will answer.
Well, he. I mean, I thought of a great man, I don't, I don't know who's up there talking. He can show numbers, I'm just saying.
Yeah, very knowledgeable.
Nobody is. And it was said by other people around the state, you know, what his assets were to, for this county or this area anyway.
Yeah, definitely needs to.
Very knowledgeable.
Yeah.
And we'll use all the resources we have.
I agree.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. That's all that I have for the board today.
Oops, sorry.
Do we have?
Yeah.
Any citizens that wish to address the board? Seeing none? Next, Luann, do you want to come up?
Sure.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And again, welcome home.
Thank you. It was nice to go, it was nice to get back, so.
Did you bring us some rocks or something?
A lot of them out there, wow. Everybody's got rocks in their yard out there of all kinds, so. I like it you to keep my husband from bringing a bunch of rocks, so I said, our suitcase will weigh too much if you do this, so.
And you didn't put them in his pocket?
You did not.
We went on vacation once with my sister and her husband on motorcycles. We had purely, yeah, along. My sister collects rocks. I got home and he's like, yeah, this thing just isn't running. She had thirty six pounds of rocks in the trailer. She'd find one, she says, hey, go over there, I'll hide it. She had them.
Okay, calendar for this week. One o'clock this afternoon is the work session at the former hospital building. Do you get a tour? I'm still waiting to hear from Janet Treat, where we're supposed to meet them up there, but we're still working on that. Wednesday, September first at nine AM is the RTA meeting for all of you. And that's either interview in person or by Zoom. At six o'clock tomorrow night is a nine one one service board meeting for Mike. Thursday, September second at six thirty is a historic preservation meeting regarding the Andrew jail. And that will be held in Andrew, and I think it's open to all of you, but I, Larry, particularly wanted Larry there because he's been part of that project. Friday, September third from four to six PM is the farewell reception for Nick Hattenbury in Bellevue. Monday, September sixth is Labor Day, the courthouse will be closed that day. Tuesday, September seventh, we'll reopen and we'll have our regular, our next regular meeting at nine o'clock that morning. And at four PM that afternoon is the McCoke River Watershed Management Authority Executive Meeting by Zoom for Larry. All right, the first thing I want to talk about is, and Lisa can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a school board election on the, no, there's not.
Oh, so that's not necessary.
That's necessary, okay. And we will just skip that first item. I'm also going to talk very quickly about a public hearing date for USDA financial assistance that Lynn Meager is talking about. We need to set the public hearing date for that. And it's a ten and twenty, so September twenty first is the first time we can do the public hearing. And under what time is nine AM or if you want to change it, but that's my suggestion. Is ninety AM on September twenty first for that public hearing date.
That works for, good enough for us at nine AM, we're here and that's, I mean, I, 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 we've talked. You get several things in the, in the fire, the USC applying for two or three different grants and. So, yeah, we need to move forward with it.
So is that your motion?
I, I would make a motion to set the public hearing date for September twenty first at nine AM.
Second. Motion is second, set the public date, public hearing date at September twenty first, nine o'clock for the USDA Financial Assistance Grant. All those in favor?
My, my.
I, motion carried.
Okay, the other item I have on here is discussion, I was watching on a nine one one radio update.
Again, I think we will table that, they are in the process of maybe, I mean, the presentation they showed us and, and they threw some numbers out there and they're looking to find some percentages from municipalities where we might stand in this whole process and we'll discuss more tomorrow. Late, and I think they'll come back with a proposal and then we decide whether, where we want to be and how we want to approach it, I guess. I mean, as we kicked the can long enough, so we got it. One way, yeah, they either impose a levy, which we don't like to see, but they can do an emergency levy. But we'll see how it all, you know, from what I've heard, the, the planning of it, it could work, yeah. We have the ability to move forward, I think, so.
Did you stop and talk to the Motorola people?
I, I've talked to them many, many times.
Back to Des Moines.
Yeah, I, I did because they were, it gave us special, we, they have brought all these radios here, but they help.
They were very, anybody, I, I did stop and speak to them and they were very knowledgeable and very.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
They give a presentation to the fire departments and all the EMS's and.
Don't remember this gentleman.
They threw a monoflor, kicked him around and.
I was. And I didn't see one to pick up, so.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's amazing what they've done with them over the past. And Bjorn probably knows too from the fire department that, you know, they're now, they're making the display bigger and the number or the button you need the most is larger and in a good spot and it's.
Yeah.
Yeah. Techniques to all that, but they come with a price tag.
Well, everything does.
Yeah.
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 So that, I think we table that.
Okay.
Unless somebody else has a, you're from where I'm from.
Okay, I think that's all I had today.
All right.
Okay. Thanks. I think the next two items, nine forty and nine fifty. I believe since, since Brent is not, he's out of, out of, out of this area, had a school of some sort. So I know he has some information you want to be shared with us and some things that we need to consider and look at. But I think that that, those two work sessions will be when he's able to be with us. So at this time, we'll recess.
Reporting just from the building, not the land, septic, just building.
Okay. This time we're being joined by Todd and Brian. My.
You guys have a schedule today?
Yeah, we are. We're changing.
Almost went home.
That's. Okay. Well, just kind of give me your report, right? Andrew's going pretty well. I talked to Matt this morning and actually brought you up, Mike, and says, really been nice working with you. And you guys have really been great with the sidewalk, everything's getting done and so that's all going really well, right?
Yep, the trees are out, so good.
Yeah, we've got, I think Marty was unaware that there was one other one in back there somewhere, so I, so that's why we didn't get this done right here. Right yet, this.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Overall, things are kind of the same as last time. We're short staffed, we're probably about ten percent down statewide, which is about a hundred and sixty five to a hundred and seventy five staff. I was looking for the sheet with the wage increases, we just gave more wage increases, so we're, we're doing our best there. And I'll just tell you real clearly, we're, we're dipping into reserves and doing things to get wage increases that I, I'm a little scared is going to hurt us down the road. Having said that, every agency in the state is throwing money out there as fast as they can and trying to figure out a way to draw people in. If I'm being honest, it doesn't really matter what we try, it doesn't seem to be real effective. When you give a twenty five hundred dollar signaling bonus and nobody applies, it's very frustrating. Makes you wonder, having said that, you guys know, I, I've talked to a lot of other agencies and I think we're in the same boat as everybody else. From where I sit, I just keep asking, what's the end game here? I mean, at what point, we're, we're already looking at consolidating services, you know, taking two group homes, turning them into one, that kind of thing. And everything we're doing and everything we're looking at is a way to combat the lack of labor. You know, technology, for example, there's a program called Night Owl where you can monitor people at night and if I'm being honest, there's times when I question whether or not the quality of the service is going to be the same. Having said that, I think we have to work within the rules that everybody else is working within and we have to make that adjustment. So we're, we're trying, we're doing the best we can. You guys know the governor put more money in, so we will be getting an increase from the state, so they've been very supportive. But I know nationally, there's a group called ANCOR and there's been an email chain going around there and the states are all, I mean, every state's in the same boat we are. So I don't know that we're any worse than anybody else. Having said that, I'm not sure it can get a whole lot worse, so.
Never say never.
Never say never. And we're, and we're trying to get our, our wages increased for starting people and, and having a range so we can bring people in at a higher rate. But again, nobody appreciates the fact that, you know, what we're doing today is going to hurt us tomorrow. And so if there's not going to be future rate increases and that kind of thing, it's going to make it very difficult to, to survive. One other thing, I don't think I mentioned this the last time. I'm not sure staff knows this, I'm not sure I should say this, EDO. We recently purchased an electronic documentation software system. It's a system that we use and the people that owned it retired and therefore we purchased the system and we take ownership October one. But the reason we're doing this is frankly to control some costs. But it's also maybe an opportunity to create some revenue outside of Medicaid that we could use to offset some of the direct care wages and things like that. We're trying those kinds of things, frankly, they, they usually aren't all that successful because it's no, no easier finding labor in the different areas than it is ours. And I guess that would be the other thing is we're, you know, you guys go downtown. Every, every storefront's looking for people, every restaurant's closing early, it's just kind of the way, the way it is. So if you guys got any magic solutions, we'd be happy to hear them and.
Well, I'll tell you, we talk about it all the time in workforce.
Yeah.
It's just people are staying home.
They are.
They're they don't want to get rid of their checks that they get from the government, they don't want to lose their childcare consent. It's just, it's just unbelievable.
It is, there's a work group at the state level, I don't know if you're familiar with Leanne Moskowitz, but she's running that work group and I've been on some work groups with her. She's excellent and she's one of the people at the state that really expedites everything. But again, you get all these providers in the room and the seemingly easy answer is money, 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 throw more money at it. And you just have example, 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 where agencies went from twelve dollars an hour to sixteen dollars an hour and there was no movement whatsoever in hiring or anything else. So it's not a money problem, you're right, we've got to incentivize people to get off the couch. And I wish they would come up with a system where you could work for a not-for-profit and, you know, if you're on, you know, food stamps or something like that, you're working and getting those. That would make sense to me, but if there's a real disconnect right now with that happening, you know, to the food stamps, it's at a twenty five percent increase. That's not going to help us and it's great for the people that need it, it's not going to help us find people to work. And it's, it's challenging. Very challenging. I'm doom and gloom today, I'm sorry. And, and having said that, one thing I would say for the cameras is, you know, we complain about the staff, but we have a, a lot of wonderful, dedicated, committed staff. And frankly, there's times when I wonder why they stay with us because they're working short, they're working long hours. But the majority of the folks we have are wonderful, it's just bringing in new people that share that passion for the mission and want to serve the people that we have. And it's tough to find, tough to find.
Yeah, Andrew might be the one exception kind of to our agency. I mean, it's, it's one person away from being fully staffed, so that's, you know, we can live with that all day long. And then obviously it's, it's full as pretty much always is, so. So, yeah, the RCF's doing well on its own, so.
Jack, you can appreciate this and this is the purpose of the meeting, you know. It's tough to get referrals now, so you, the referrals that are out there are the most difficult people in the world. And so if you take a chance and you take an individual from Des Moines and you get them here, there's literally, I mean, if we have them here for a week and let's say they beat up five staff and they put people in the hospital, there's no mechanism to get that person out of our agency. None. We can call the police and the police will say, great, and in best case, they take them to the hospital because they shouldn't be going to jail and hospital's going to send them back. There's no place to go, so a place like us takes a chance on someone like that and we're literally with that person for a year, year and a half, two years. And we're literally with that person for a year, year and a half, two years. Now, keep in mind, if that person runs out of the house every time they get in the house, now we gotta call Department of Inspections and Appeals and say there's been an elopement, even though we know where the person went. And now we have fines and you have all kinds of consequences for that. That's the stuff people don't understand. When you're taking these more difficult people. Bad things are going to happen at times. They just are and nobody want and REM, you know, REM gets beat up all the time for for their services. Well, if we serve the same people REM did, we'd have the same problems REM does. That's just the reality of it, so we have to figure out a way for our folks to go someplace when they're in crisis and right now they're really. There's there's nothing and and that's been avoiding the system since day one, that's nothing new. Um, and I understand the hospitals don't wanna be saddled with people that they're not gonna get paid for as well, but. Nobody cares about us quite as much as the hospitals. We need more doctors. I think, yeah. Questions for us, guys?
I'm talking about this.
Well, no, well, you probably know, let the report come back and there were a couple of deficiencies and we said to go ahead. So, I mean, as far as. I know at one time here we had a leak somewhere and we don't know if that could lead to better, bigger, better things. But I have not heard anything more on that yet lately, so.
Have you ever looked at solar?
You know, we talked about that briefly.
University of Iowa is doing a study of all the buildings that the county owns. Um, for solar.
Okay.
And um I know that they're gonna look at the Historical Society Museum, they're gonna look at your building.
Okay.
And they're gonna get, look at our blueprint for the jail. And get some inform and we're gonna get some information from them there. It's gonna, I, isn't it a nine-month study that they? Bring back a report and give us breakdowns as to what the potential savings might be um after the initial cost.
Right.
Uh, of putting in solar, so I know that they're gonna look at your building.
I know my friends at MME, you don't necessarily love the solar, but I'll tell you, we have the solar out there and it's been uh wonderful. It's actually performed much better than we thought it would. It's had a major impact on utilities and it's.
I know, ECIA just are so thankful that they could put solar out at their new building.
Yep, and I I was saying, I know that Matt mentioned this today, is LED lighting and it's kind of a no-brainer too. The payback on that is anywhere from fourteen to eighteen months. Depending on what kinda deal you get, but the lighting, everything gets better with LED lighting and it gets cheaper, so and it sounds like that's something Jared.
Rebates into some of that too.
Absolutely, absolutely, and you can have him come out.
We had talked to him about that uh septic field too also, and that kinda got. Put off to the side here a bit, a little bit to summer. We did get all kinds of dirt in there to get a level of less fall, but then we kinda got. Waiting for the inspector to come and see how many of the pipes we could get rid of. Now we know, now we're gonna have our maintenance guy go out and do kind of a. Process and see how much work this is really gonna be and if you, if we can get together and. Cut them off and cover them ten inches and we were good to go and then. We need to give um Jared a lesson on that tractor and.
He might not want a lesson.
To it, it's just, uh, I think it would be much easier than that lawnmower we're talking. I mean, I noticed and I don't know who does all the cutting out there if you have that down there. I mean, no, I was out last night just to inspect the concrete while I was going and. The, I mean, the north side of the property was rather long over by the bends and such. He might be just a day out or something. I mean, it wasn't.
We're doing it.
I mean, it's not, it wasn't, don't even break it up, I think it wasn't an issue.
And we did talk about, you know, doing a couple rooms. Um, and we did okay that.
You know, the one thing, I think it was two weeks ago I was out there.
Especially the one secretary, the one office, that needs done immediately.
But that office was full.
So I was out there a couple of weeks ago and stripping wax the floors. I mean, obviously it makes them shine a little bit better, but um I don't know if you guys have like. A more industrial type um stripper, because I mean, the one we have, just there's fifty years of wax on there that we just can't get off, so. I don't know if you guys have anything or. We would do it.
I would say yes, we do.
We would do it. I mean, I don't wanna do it now, they just did them, but you know, maybe three months from now.
Do you wanna practice on the courthouse?
That sounds like a work. So I'm glad to hear that that's going good and and uh, you know, we, you also know that we have been spending some funds out there. So I know as a couple, two, three years ago, we reduced it out there a little bit, so. You said nothing but good things about Andrew so far.
Yep, we gotta have certain parts that actually, don't lose money, Mike, that's the whole, you know, we gotta have a few sections that prop the rest of us up.
If you come across some old records, though, we're still looking for some old records of you.
Yeah, there's a couple of different spots.
So let us know if you come across those, cause we are interested in those old records.
Sometimes it's best just to lose them. And I think you're still working.
I, you know, I made phone calls and then they don't get returned, but I'll I'll put it on my to-do list.
Yeah, so we're working to try to do something with the DHS files that are in that one building that could be really utilized. Either one of us could use that building, everything.
I'll, I'll make a note, I'll, I'll reach out again, see how.
Yeah, it's the next room. Thirty-two file.
And everything is, I mean, everything can be destroyed, it's been there long enough.
Oh, yeah, the last phone call that I had, they were looking for mobile shredding.
We used to, we kinda got out of it, it wasn't, I mean, we've got the industrial shredder, but I don't know if we got anybody to actually do the shred.
Well, then where would you take it?
Well, we used, we used to have back in the day, the police would actually come out and watch for like their stuff and watch it actually be destroyed, so you always have that option. We could do it in a private area, but you wanna just ask if we can do that? I mean, that'd make life a little easier for everybody.
Yeah, we had that option, that would make it be easier for them to say, yeah, go ahead, we have some kind of authority watching over us. Been long enough. Be nice to get that taken care of.
So if we shred it, could we have dipper bail it and use it for fuel? I mean, they have these big, but farmers can use for heating. I don't know if they're using one in their building or not.
Yeah, we still, we still have a bale or, I mean, we do, yeah, we still have that stuff. I know when we used to do the industrial, we used to sell a lot of that for bedding for farmers and things like that, the shredded, you know, they come in. Right, so maybe we'll do that too, but yeah, we can look into that.
I just don't know what it takes, I don't know if there's that much material there, it's just a matter of.
So you don't have mobile shredding, but you have shredding at the.
Yeah, we have an industrial shredder, a crosscut, you know, it was. Or I even got here and it was pretty popular back in the day and then it just stopped and we didn't do much with it.
Okay.
And up to the best of my knowledge, it's still available, so. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
Thanks. We got them all warmed up.
Okay, this time we're going to be joined by Sally Davies with uh NEI three A.
Hi, how are you guys? Um, so we had a board meeting the other day, um, one of the things, the the big discussion is the back to work. And having the centers open, um, with that, they've put the. The masks required for people coming in and for people working no matter what, just because it's such a vulnerable population that we work with. Um, so when any of the the staff from NEI three A go to a home visit or in any meal site that is required. There's a screening process, so they just reiterated that. Um, with the the recent variant coming out, so the big concerns. Um, I talked with Shannon yesterday and um the numbers are very low here in the Copa for those participating in the meal. Portion of the senior center being open, but the card clubs are coming back, you know, little things at a time. Um, imagine the possibilities are are really great. They they volunteer and help get things ready to go when Shannon's not there. Um, so that works out really well. Um, the talk, she said that next week her hope is to be able to open the Bellevue Meal Site. So people can come in. Um, she's got the volunteers lined up to do that. Everything is really reliant on that. So for local things, that's what's happening. As far as. An agency, NEI three A, the new twenty-eight. E agreements, you guys should have got them. Yeah, they mailed them on Friday. Um, it's just a cohesive contract for all eighteen counties so that everybody has the same verbiage. Um, not putting counties in a position where. Um, if you have the contract, when you you do dole out resources, then you're not um in trouble with the government. As you can't make donations to that nonprofit, so that was really the focus that way. Um, I did talk to Mike Donahue this morning because I am not an expert on these by any means. I just heard the words and said, okay, you better fill me in a little bit. And he said, if there are questions, please call him. He's aware that I'm I'm here today and with, that there potentially could be.
Well, Sarah did look at it and she does have some comments, so we'll have her just submit those to him for them to consider and look at. She just broke them in our, on our copies and we'll just have her send that to him.
Yeah, and he said he'd be happy to answer any of those questions. This is the form that they're using for all twenty-eight counties. Or not twenty-eight, excuse me.
You had this approved with ICAP then too, I suppose you dealt with them and started, I know our thick iron insurance company has said he was gonna contact ICAP. And have them look it over too, so.
I'm I'm guessing they did, because that was done in a sub. Yeah, they had their attorneys and everything looking at it, so I'm certain that it has. Um, the other piece was the mission and the vision statement will be changing with NEI three A with the Northeast Iowa. Um, the missions. Mission statement changing to um NEI three helps older persons respond to their evolving needs and choices. And then the vision is the older person have access to support and empower them to live the choice and dignity in their community. So those are really the things that are kinda moving around right now, um, but that. Agreement is probably the biggest thing that you guys would see. But Mike is aware that I'm here and that if you have questions, he said, call. No worries. Do you have other questions for me?
We have a phone number or an email address for Mike.
It may not, it is not on here, but I do have it, um, do you have it? Yeah, I I do have it.
Is it Northeast Iowa Area Aging Attention CEO thirty-eight forty West Ninth Street Waterloo, Iowa five oh seven oh two?
Let me get a direct number for you, okay? Technology. All right, Mike's phone number is. It is three one nine. Eight seven four. Six eight eight five.
And an email?
Sure. I got it. Are you ready? M D O N O H U E. At N E I three A dot O R G.
Three is a number three?
Yes.
Somebody get that? I got the first four, I think. Takes me a while to process.
Me too, me too, it's all good.
I didn't figure I'd be on the bottom of this.
So I think the biggest, the biggest thing is um just locally, um, I know I deliver meals on wheels. From our local senior site and one route, there's seventeen spots that you deliver and the other route, there's fourteen. Um, it's it's been going very well on a lot of folks that have been getting, getting services that maybe they didn't in the past. Um, the low numbers internally, as far as congregate meal. People are still fearful of that, you know?
So your meals are being made?
In Bellevue.
Okay, but they're not open for sure.
They are not open yet for the congregate site. The the goal is next week. It's just a process. No, Shannon is over both of them now. Karen has retired.
I thought she did.
Yep, um, she is volunteering, um, but I don't know in what capacity. So with Shannon being in the Copa, one day a week will be her time in Bellevue and then the other two days would be here. Um, and she's able to do all of the other things that need to be done as far as reporting and answering the calls remotely. The office is here and set up that way. So.
So your meals are just five days a week?
Five days a week. There is an option for frozen. So some folks are opting to have the froze, have the meals frozen and only get them delivered on Monday. That makes a big car load.
Okay, thank you for coming in. Okay, are there any boards or commissions, reports that anybody has?
Oh, the light bulb thing, is that something we could use that? There to rescue funding, money for? I mean, that's an upgrade that would continue on.
When you think about doing all the county buildings with it, it would be a pretty good. Good question, I mean, yeah, put it on your list. We'll have to discuss it.
Isn't there two different funds, the ones for the COVID stuff? That we've been using on and this is to.
Oh, stimulate the economy, the first one more for supplies related, correct? I mean, I think for. Protection equipment and such. The shields and the masks and the gowns, whatever he was doing.
And that went through when?
And he got three different brands in right now that you may be able to use. Here or there.
I know I've signed a few applications here.
So a lot of the staff and the hands are tied.
Yeah, I.
And then one of their big things is water quality and water quantity. And to me, that's an upgrade for the water system, but how do you relate that to COVID? I don't see where. I guess I'm questioning the COVID thing for that money. I mean, to me, I thought it was more of a stim- stimulation, a stimulus plan project.
Well, because I asked the question, why are they paying for broadband? Why is that? Yep, so people can work from home. More people are working from home now and that's why broadband is so.
But there's a separate hundred million dollars that they just signed for broadband.
That was through the state of Iowa. This came, this money came from the Fendle, wasn't it?
So if we get a hundred million from the state.
What'd you do when, win something else? Is there any other questions to come before the meeting today?
No, I don't, I again, will, I will give you a better report for the nine-one-one. Project and hopefully I can get hold of John and. project and hopefully I can get hold of John and update us on there. We'll look at the one up there at the hospital and just to see if. There's quite a few buildings up there.
There certainly are. Okay. I would second. Motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor? I motion carry.